Motion to go into closed, well, they called a meeting in order first and we'd already called it in another room, but I need a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss consideration interviews for prospective candidates for employment, assignment, apartment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific offices, appointees, employees of any public body, one adjustment and appeals board, community services board, Montgomery tourist development council, parks and recreation commission, planning commission, and Roanoke Valley area NPO will have a motion.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're now in closed meeting. I called a meeting in order, need a motion to go out of closed meeting.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Six ayes.
Certification of closed meeting whereas the board of supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on the date pursuant to an affirmative record recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second?
Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Now we'll move to the next item on our agenda and that is our invocation and after a moment of silence will be led by the pleasure allegiance by Mr. Matters. This is a moment where we reflect on the business at hand for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Our next item is delegations and we have a delegation from the Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. David Clark, who will be providing an update on road projects, issues in Montgomery County. Welcome, David.
Thank you. Good evening. We've run a whole lot of updates, of course, for the past month we've been dealing with a lot of weather, excuse me, weather issues. It's extremely cold and it got warm, so that really plays havoc on our gravel roads, especially they get very soft. It's almost like dealing with two or three springs all in one year. We usually have that spring thaw where it gets bad, we've had some thaws, almost very hard freezes and so we spent a lot of time over the last month when we are dealing with the actual snow or ice itself, dealing with, I'm trying to put our gravel roads back in shape and doing popl, actually we can't. The good thing is that we had some warm enough days where we were able to get some good mix, a plant mix to patch some popl. Just a couple of updates on some projects. We've advertised the project, I mentioned this last time, and has been awarded the bridge on, the Old Trust Bridge down to Fayette. That's going to be replaced, it'll take more than one construction season, I think it's due to finish next year. That's the only one that's under construction or under contract right now. We have had some roads that, some projects that are going to be advertised this month or next, in the next couple of months. One being Mount Pleasant Road, we're going to get that advertised hopefully in the next couple of months. That'll go from the bridge to about Split Railroad, get that section in there. There is an improvement project at what was Rainbow Road, I can't remember that, they've changed the name of it now, but Rainbow Road just come out.
Tech Center Drive.
It's not Tech Center, it's something else. I can't remember. But it's the, improve the, there's two signals, a lot of traffic is going sort of north in, like towards Blacksburg on South Main Street, turning left and then right to get to the Corporate Research Center, maybe Research Center Drive or maybe it's, I don't know. And the flow just doesn't work very well right now, so we've got a project that will widen out Rainbow Road a little bit, put some turn lanes, make that turn movement a little bit easier. I don't have a completion date on that, I don't have right now, but I think that's going to be advertised this month. We're also advertising several bridge replacement projects this month is when they will be advertised. It's a large bundle of projects that are in Montgomery County as long as several other counties and so the contractor will have a couple of years to finish that, this construction season and next. But that will replace bridges on Power Creek Road, sort of the McCoy area, one of the bridges on Dry Valley Road, a culvert on Colby Hollow Road and a culvert on Legrand, also sort of that in the McCoy area. Well, I'll give you a little more information on exactly when the contractor will be doing. Colby Hollow will be closed and there'll be a detour no longer than 60 days, but we don't know the order that they're going to be done in. They have until November 2015 to finish, but they have a 60-day window to close any one particular road. Couple of roads where they don't have adequate detour, we'll be putting up temporary signals so close one lane at a time. There's also a question that came through email that we've looked at, Ms. Biggs asked about guard rail on Rush Creek Road, I've looked at that. We can put some guard rail there. The funding for that does come out of the secondary construction program. We don't have a particular line item for that, I don't necessarily need a resolution, I just sort of need consensus that the board is okay. Very rough estimate is about $10,000 to put what I think would probably be about 300 feet of guard rail, is what it looked like to me. It's in that curve, the second curve from the, from 460, so we can do that. We haven't done that in a long time. We used to have a line item in the budget for that, we changed our budgeting process. There's still money in there, it's just not that line item anymore. What we used to do is take requests for new guard rails sort of throughout the fiscal year and then in the spring gather those requests, prioritize them, and do maybe the top two or three depending on how much, how much money it was. So, we don't have a list, so to speak, anymore of those, so that's the only one on the list. Like I said, I think it's about 300 feet. It'll cost much of the end sections and you have to have those no matter how long the guard rail is, so. That's all I have really in the way of updates of what's going on. Like I said, it's the most weather related things, we'd be glad to take any questions the board might have.
So do I need to do, what do I need to do to get that to happen? You'd say consensus or do I need to bring it up under?
And that's purely up to the board, how they would like to do that. I didn't, I don't need anything personally, but I just bring that up because I am, to use that as using your secondary construction funds, which the board has sort of priority or, you know, voice in how that's.
With consensus of the board suffice. Roll on.
And it's $10,000 and there's, there's money in an account that can be used for that. It's not going to affect any projects, I can put it that way.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to get that done.
Okay. Ms. Creed?
Glad to hear about the Mount Pleasant to split rail, but I'm also interested in the Mount Pleasant, the curve straightening pass-through as well that we've got, you know, what, $200,000, $300,000.
I think that one is a revenue sharing project.
Indeed.
Yeah, so we've been focusing our efforts on getting this to add. We do have a hired equipment contractor that will probably get to do the work. I believe they've started looking at any reasons we might need environmental stuff to do that.
I have another question, I'm not sure like how this all plays out, but there was an accident which a young man was killed coming out of the north part of Blacksburg onto 460, making a left-hand turn and I think some other accidents have happened there, but his friends have been, there's, I think they put up a little memorial type thing and they were wondering how to go about, you know, if they wanted to maintain that piece of property and I don't know if it's in the town or if it's part of the 460 median or what.
I can look and see if there's a, if it's in our right of way. We also have a program that allows people to place an official sign.
I think that's what they're sort of interested in doing. And then the other question that has come up to me and I guess, I guess it goes back to the town, I'm not sure, but since there were accidents before there that people have been killed in, there's been brought up, should there be a stoplight there? And of course I know stoplights are based on how many people are killed over time, that's what I was told when I first got on the board, which sort of made me sort of sick to my stomach, but I don't know if that's still the policy, but.
It's never been a policy. We put a, we put a light at the high school and Franklin Street, I don't think there are any fatalities, there's a list of warrants that intersection has to meet, these are federal guidelines.
Mm-hmm. So if, if we wanted to look into that, do we just ask you how many accidents happen there or how do we find out?
I can, I can ask our traffic engineering people to do a study to see if it meets warrants for a signal.
Okay.
I know that, that's a topic, that's, you know, it's been under discussion.
Right.
We're looking at, you know, all kinds of different things, I mean, interchange would be in the tens of millions of dollars, so that's not going to happen anytime soon.
Right, right. But they asked specifically, should there be a, and I said, I don't know, because I really didn't know the proper protocol except to ask you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And of course signals bring their own set of issues, obviously coming down Rush Mountain and encountering a red light there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I would be happy, I would really like to investigate that, get some more information about that particular intersection, I don't think a stoplight would really be the way to go, I mean, what.
Maybe a caution.
What would happen is they just auto-privet left turns into and out of that turn and just allow people to merge right onto and off of that thing and you just got to go up to Tom's Creek if you want to get into Blacksburg and that's fine. It'd be personally inconvenient because I live out there and I get on 460 that way, but that's really, for safety sake, that's really what should happen. So if, if you could bring us back some thoughts on that.
Yeah, and maybe instead, I mean, a signal study can be part of an overall safety study of that intersection.
Yeah.
Where, you know, you should look at every possibility, signal being one.
Yeah.
You may then discard that for safety reasons, but then look at other things as well.
Like is there some kind of caution flash or, I don't know, but, okay, so you'll find that out for us and then if the, if the people want to pursue the memorial thing, should they get in contact with your office?
Yes, our office can handle it.
Okay, got you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I feel like I've one. Outside my constituents, but over towards the hospital, right where I guess this Meta Creek comes in to where going out towards Children's, I got a complaint that there was a lot of water puddling in that area.
I've looked at that.
Okay, and I didn't know if there was anything that we can do about it or if there a culvert put in or something along those.
I think, I think the culvert that's there is stopped up. We also looked at, I bathed myself and looked at it. There's a couple of options, we may be able to ditch it actually back towards the ramp that goes down, the on-ramp to 81, that might get into a, a better drainage system because it's paved and there's a large pipe, how deep that ditch would be, or it may just be simply a matter of getting that pipe cleaned out. If it's not frozen over, it seems like then there's mud in it. It's been a hard time to try to investigate what's clogging that pipe up right now, but it's definitely.
I go that way quite often, it's amazing.
That's a hard list of things to get done, I've noticed that myself.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one up, one up ma'am, I didn't even mention. This is our February meeting and we will, we usually have our six-year plan public hearing either in March or April and I was just wondering if the board, the county administrator, had any preference on when you'd like to do that? You'd like to do it in March, would you rather do it in April? I know we don't usually like to get too close to the end of fiscal year because you will are busy with your budget at that time.
Would love to do it the second meeting in April because that gets us past our heavy budget time.
Okay, in April, that's your second, the second meeting, which is the fourth Monday?
I believe that's right, yes. Well, yes, that is right. It would be the, be the 28th, April 28th.
Okay, I'll do that. First reason I ask, we have to put advertisements in newspapers and all that kind of thing, so I, the date you prefer, we'll start working on that. All right, so thank you all.
The next item on our agenda is public addresses. We have several people who signed up to speak tonight and I asked that when I call your name, you come forward and address all comments to the board and you have five minutes, state your name and address and first person to speak is Soufariah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's really very nice to be here and I'm coming here to say thank you. I'm not begging. The last time I think I came we were begging, but we want to thank you all for your continued support at the museum and particularly for your recent one-time gift of the support for the roof. You must come and see the museum, it's looking really good. Looks like it had a facelift and a haircut. In fact, you've timed it the whole process and we're happy to be back in business and I just want to tell you that you have helped give a gift that will ensure the longevity of this building, which is now 162 years old. We did, we took a long time with the process because we needed to get the white people, so that research was valuable because we found a very good company who knew how to maintain the integrity of the building and the historical part of it, so we're very pleased about that. And we're moving on to other needs, we keep having needs because in a building like that we do. I want you to know that we're not just asking for money, we are making efforts to do fundraising events all through the year and we're offering art classes to try to become more like the art center we say we are and we're making Heritage Day kind of a focal point of the year. We had an ace in the hole last year with a neat young man who was Louis Miller, seems that he has a resemblance to somebody around here. And we don't have that wonderful attraction this year, but we hope that we'll, we'll make it a big success and continue on to earn the money we are. We're beginning to establish an endowment, so we're taking responsibility for the future of the museum in ways that has not been done before, so we're very excited to beg what the future looks like and the partnerships that we're forming in the community. We are asking this year for extra funds and very specifically, we have a secret weapon at the museum and her name is Sherri Wyatt. She's our collections manager, she's bright off the chart, she's got a master's degree and she's working for minimum wage and we want to keep her and she is why the museum is doing so well. She's creative and she's making us look wonderful, so we're hoping that we can keep her, keep her on board and keep her going and keep the museum in the way that it's going. We feel like we're gaining visibility and becoming a more integral part of the community, but just thank you for your support always and just want you to know. I have a gift, we were able to obtain prints from Robert Turner of the courthouse's and we had two prints of the, the two oldest.
Aww.
Wow.
Can I bring them up there or do I leave them here?
Yeah.
Thank you all.
We'll be glad to get those framed and put in the very.
Yeah, good frame, Richard.
Okay. Okay, the next citizen signed up is Sherri Blevins.
Good evening, Sherri Blevins, 240, Virginian Drive, Christiansburg. I've spoken in front of this board several times this past year over the safety threat and concerns of Falling Branch Elementary School with the close proximity of the parking ride. Here we are almost a year, a year and nothing, the parking ride is still there, so I'm here to implore you guys to help fund the removal of the parking ride and to help pressure on VDOT to remove that parking ride. The parking ride is owned by VDOT, but it is in the county of Montgomery and provides services for all Montgomery County citizens. The poor location and safety threat caused by the patrons directly affects a Montgomery County public school. Falling Branch Elementary was established at its current location before the parking ride. The poor decision to place the parking ride across from an elementary school was made by VDOT and Montgomery County officials many years ago without the foresight of the possible security and safety problems it would impact on its surrounding neighbors and that elementary school. The parking ride initially was to be used by citizens to park their vehicles in a carpool. Now however, it's become a commercial bus stop with many private bus companies utilizing that facility. The Megabus alone reports thousands of patrons use this facility each month. The Megabus is greatly used by Virginia Tech students as well as citizens outside of the county. We understand the importance of public transportation, but nothing should take the priority of the safety of our children in that school. We are desperately pleading that the board act and do so quickly. We cannot afford to let this clear and present threat continue to place our children in danger. Again, look at the reported criminal activity, not to mention incidents that have not been officially reported. There have been over 50 document incidents by the staff there at Falling Branch Elementary. There have been well over 25 police calls or potentially responsive calls by Christiansburg Police Department and most recently, the US Marshal Services apprehended a fugitive with guns drawn just a few feet from parents and their children at school was dismissing. Parents have been told by local probation officers and by mental care facilities that their clients, patients, and even convicted felons are often instructed or dropped off at that location to catch a bus. Last month, Falling Branch principal stated in an article in the London Times that the school continues to have some problems with patrons coming across that street, you know, into the school property. We are grateful for the safety and security measures implemented by the school board. However, as you know, Falling Branch does not have a resource officer at that school. The board voted not to use the governor's grant money awarded to Montgomery County for that school, even though it argued that that school should take a priority with the constant threat. We as parents here cannot understand how the safety of our children continues not to be a priority. We are tired and frustrated of everyone saying they're not responsible for the parking ride, that there is no money to remove it. Our children are every day at threat and we want the parking ride removed. We greatly plead to you, we have, we've been sending letters, trying to convince this board that something must be done and it must be done now. We cannot afford to continue to wait until something terrible happens. Parents all firsthand how scary situations can arise. There will always be that potential threat. If you're not convinced that it is a threat, I'm sure Sherri would be happy to elaborate on the dangers that potential site can, can have directly affecting that school. On behalf of the parents here, the families and the citizens of Montgomery County, this is our family, we beg you to fund the removal and make VDOT move that parking ride and do so now, we just can't afford to wait. You are elected officials, you are leaders, this is the time for you to stand up and lead. Show these citizens here that nothing takes priority over the safety of our children. Thank you guys for your help.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tracy Hurst.
Tracy Hurst, 2340, Glade Drive. I am the PTA president at Falling Branch Elementary School. Sherri said, you know, everything wonderfully and really outlined the situation that we're facing. What I'm having so much trouble with is that I am once again standing in front of another board, still begging somebody to help us take care of our children. As the PTA president, I get calls, texts, emails, all the time from parents with their concerns and I've seen it firsthand. I'm there all the time, I volunteer there all the time, I see these, these people struggling over, I've seen it over the years. We need help and we need help now before something happens and I don't think it's a matter of if something's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen. And I mean, as parents, and I know most of you probably are, the most important thing to us is making sure that our children are taken care of and right now, we're wandering around with all these meetings just begging people to help us take care of our children and to me it's just, I mean, it's crazy. We know that there's all these issues, we have all these documented, reported issues that have, that not only have the police call, but you know, ones even that they have, that we have documented that have happened and we're still, you know, nothing's happening, we're passing the buck. No, it's your responsibility. No, it's your responsibility. What's going to happen? I mean, something's going to happen to these kids and then, you know, everyone's going to have just kind of shoved it off onto somebody else or said, this is your problem, it's not our problem. I mean, we've, we've got to do something about it and I'm sorry, I'm really, I'm begging you, please, think about this as if it were your children there and imagine when this happened, I mean, and again, this situation with, with the marshals, their guns drawn, horrible situation, but, but please understand that is just one, many, many things that have happened there. But you're picking your, your kids up from school, you've got your small kids that are under school age, your kids you've already picked up from middle school, you're sitting literally lined up around this parking ride, not to mention the fact these kids in this school are coming out, they're getting on the buses, they're being picked up by their parents and these guys are over here with guns drawn, how can that possibly be? You, you can't predict, you know, what could have happened. And, and I honestly think the marshals probably didn't even know that there was an elementary school there, which again, is the point and, you know, this is unpredictable, it is volatile and it really needs to be moved. So I'm begging you to please, not only to, to help fund the removal and the, the moving of this parking ride, but again, consider the resource officer because I'm really just, I'm scared for, I'm scared for my children, being at that school. I'm scared that they just are not protected enough given that we just don't know what's going to happen there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Hatcher.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Hatcher, I live at 460 Dockwood Lane in Christiansburg. I'm also here to talk to you about the parking ride beside Falling Branch Elementary. I have six children in the Montgomery County Public School System and three of them are at Falling Branch Elementary. We've lived in Christiansburg for two years. Since I first learned about the security issues a year ago that were regarding the parking ride located about 50 feet from the entrance of my children's school, I have been concerned. I have spoken on the telephone to a representative from VDOT, I have sent emails to VDOT, I have emailed the school superintendent, I have emailed the school board members, I emailed this board of supervisors last year about this issue, I have emailed my representatives in Richmond. As a mom, trying to keep my kids safe, I am doing everything I can do to get this problem resolved and now I'm here to ask you, as my elected officials, to do everything you can do to get this problem resolved, because I'm not convinced that you have done everything that you can do. I'm not convinced that you are as concerned about the safety of my children as I am and that is quite disheartening. As school systems all around the nation take initiatives to make their schools safer places. places, our school board is hindered in trying to make Falling Branch a safer school because this is out of the school board's control now. You, however, as a county board of supervisors, can begin to take action. You just voted on a consensus to give $10,000 to Blacksburg to make it intersection safer, to make a road safer. Why is it, a year later, we're still begging you to put up some money to help move this parking ride so that five hundred students of your constituents can be safer in their school every day, a hundred and eighty days a year? You can tell VDOT that you don't want this parking ride at this particular location in your county, and then you can cooperate with them to find a better location where it will not jeopardize the safety of the youngest members of your community. A local probation officer explained that she often instructs felons who have committed crimes in our area, but who now live in the Roanoke area, to take a bus from Roanoke to this location at the parking ride beside Falling Branch Elementary. Now I'm thankful that we have public transportation for these convicted felons, but knowing that this is a common transport spot for convicted felons is disconcerting to me. These people could be registered sex offenders, and we are essentially dropping them off at the entrance of my son's school five days a week. The school continues to call law enforcement, continues to deal with security issues related to this parking ride? I don't want Falling Branch Elementary to be the next school tragedy on the national news, and I don't think you want that on your shoulders either. Yet I fear that's what's going to happen if we don't do something soon. I don't really want my friends to be sitting in line to pick up their children with their preschoolers and their middle schoolers in the car with them and look out their windows to see a bevy of law enforcement officials in bulletproof vests, holding large bulletproof shields and brandishing black assault rifles, as they apprehend a felon off of a bus and escort him across the parking lot in handcuffs, and that is exactly what happened last Tuesday afternoon. I want the teachers and staff at Falling Branch to be able to use their time and energy to educate my children not to worry about what transient might be wandering around the property trying to find an open door, especially since there are several mobile classrooms outside the school. Yet that is exactly what teachers and staff at Falling Branch have to worry about as long as there is a parking lot fifty feet away. I understand that government bureaucracy can take a ridiculously long time, but sometimes we have to find faster ways of getting things done. We do not have the luxury of waiting to be part of VDOT's six-year plan. Now, we have to work fast. Please, I'm begging you, please do not wait until a tragedy occurs. These are our children. We have a responsibility to keep them safe, and they're not safe as long as that parking ride is at the entrance of their school. So I'm asking you, please, do everything you can.
Next speaker is, signed up is Jim Paletti.
Mr. Paletti, I wouldn't change the subject a little bit here. I just want to acknowledge that last week was a milestone for progress on the industrial hemp, and I especially thank this board for the last three years of listening and yanking about this and really giving me support and all the work. Last Thursday, I was in Washington, and I visited with the Department of Agriculture. They asked me to get a couple of things down for them before I'd consider looking at this. Well, the first thing they was done was, it passed the house and it passed the city and an emergency farm bill. Arizona Land States, that states that already have laws in place can grow industrial hemp out of the universities and through their program of agriculture for the purpose of research and development and experimentation. Virginia does not have such a point in place. I would ask my friend, Travis Hill, who's the Deputy Secretary of Agriculture, to please get some information from a couple of universities to see if they're interested in pursuing this. Well, I talked to Virginia Jet and Ida Love. I talked to UVA and Ida Love, and both those schools are very interested in pursuing the experimentation of industrial hemp. I'm working now with VCU and Virginia State University, trying to get confirmation for them. I have two professors there communicating at this time. And I would ask, please, will we continue this as a legislative agenda? Do they agree with you? They came to anything this year, or what information we get? So after going to next year's market, and Rick Bush is strongly considering putting in on the strategy next year. Now, industrial hemp is a real product, it's not a normal, it is industrial hemp, it's lost some percentage of one percent THC value by a rare matter, which was the definition we've been striving for for the last several years. Once we get this passed, then we need to move on to the separate hospitals and centers that are still open and are going to have a longer activity now that we have a real definition for this product. So, again, I want to thank everybody very, very much for all their support and help the county staff, gorgeous, everybody to try and interfere this together, and I'm developing it and we'll get this all sorted. And you can imagine how I felt funny when I heard Mr. Obama, President Obama, plan that farm bill and put this into law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all the citizens who have signed up, but if it's some other citizens in the audience who would like to speak to the board, you can please so at this time, and you have five minutes to come forward.
This is Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the board. I'm talking with Sheriff from Montgomery County, all of you know, all of you may not. I was present last week when the US Marshal Services had to remove the felon on the Megabus that was coming, I think, out of Atlanta, Georgia, or it being dispatched out of Atlanta, Georgia. We got very short notice to assist and participate in that removal of a felon. He was a felon who was, had absconded his total probation. He was suspected of being armed with the intelligence information that the Marshal Services had. As you know, or can probably well imagine, there's a very large law enforcement presence there. However, most everyone was in your BDU pants, there was the black tactical vest covers, there were subguns on tactical swings, there were drop holsters and weapons, there was a large showing of law enforcement. The evacuation of the bus, and there were probably twenty-five and thirty people standing outside filming and photographing everything that went on. However, the whole time I was there, I maintained my focus on what was going on with law enforcement and with the commuters on the bus. I wasn't paying attention to what was behind me, but I knew what was behind me. However, the impact of what was behind me really didn't hit me too hard until I started to leave after Marshal Services loaded their arrestee up and was headed to Roanoke with them. What I found was all the parents picking up their children had come in and worked their way up to the pickup point, and then along the road running up the side of the parking ride, they draped all the way back around into the right turn lane. And I thought, ooh, this could not have come at a worse time of day than it came, as it came that day. And they passed over the 114, which is around eight exit, when we got notification they needed our help. So we had luckily maybe ten minutes. And it was a very large show of force out there. The likelihood of something happening would probably have been very easily contained, but once the bullet leaves the muzzle of the weapon, the person that squeezed that trigger, that bullet plumb to them. Got their name written all over it, through forensics and ballistics. So I can't say there wasn't a danger to a school, to parents, to anyone that was in that neighborhood area. Fortunately, the young man that we took off the bus, or that was taken off the bus by the Marshal Services, I don't want to insert "we" in something that I really didn't do He did not have his weapon on him, and they were retrieving his baggage, and we sent an evidence technician out to do that purpose. So with that being said, the proximity to the school and proximity to the bus and ride, they're not happy neighbors and they never will be, so I would encourage this board, if there's any way whatsoever, to make something else happen somewhere. The only thing they save when they get off that bus is a school and a few residential properties and overpasses. So they're naturally going to go to what they perceive as a public building, and it's going to be obviously the schools. And if we can move it back to the other end of that intersection somewhere along there, there may be some room out in one of the industrial parks on the lower end down at Lake where there's not many residential properties. Our speakers tonight were very right, ministerial associations, social services, anyone, here's a bus ticket, here's a bus ticket, here's a bus ticket, and this is how far it takes you, and then you become that other problem, that other locality's problem. So I question, how many sex offenders are getting offered on there? How many wanted felons? I can't go up and screen them before they get on the bus, I can't violate their constitutional rights. I was standing there with one young man, about a bicep, his hands were cut behind his back, and I was holding him, we talked, and I told him, I said, "You look just like the wanted poster from the Marshal Services." He said, "A man, it's not me." He said, "Dude's on the bus." He said, "It might have cut his hair." And the next thing I see, not one with dreadlocks, but a person with a regular clothes cut after a haircut, going up in front of the bus in handcuffs, and that was the person, a marshal woman. This man that I had was holding for the Marshal Services, good young man, he was riding a bus, but he fit the dag gone mugshot to a pea. I looked at it, told the marshal, he looked at it, he admitted it, that Tony said the guy must have gained some weight, he must have cut his hair. But when they let him off, he looked at me, he said, "He told me they were here for me" when he saw him. So he knew it, he chose not to engage in violence, which was a wise decision on his behalf because many people could have been injured. And I know that my bottom line's gone, so I'll leave you alone. But I do encourage the board, if there's anything we can do to move that, let's go. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'm going to make a statement at this particular time, and every one of my co-board members up here. The parking ride problem out there is a top priority for this board, am I correct, board members? And we are working very diligently with some VDOT and some other people out of Richmond and trying to get our legislatures and so forth to try to address this problem. And it just didn't, when you came last year, we started addressing it then, but just like government, the wheels of government turned slowly, and it turned too slow for us even up here. We'd like to see it move and some things happen out there. So we are hearing you all, we're not sticking a head in the mud and ignoring you, but we believe that not only the Falling Branch children, but all the children in Montgomery County is important to us. And so I wanted to convey that to you all, that we'll work it and work it and work it.
I'm going to, I think he was coming up next, Jack, to speak, but I thought I'd just make that statement at that particular time.
It's an entirely wonderful subject, and we should handle that and get that out of the way, I have something on a totally different area, but, folks, my name is Jack Self, I'm a high rock and road down in Pilot. And regardless of that, we had this discussion last year about the possibility of moving it off from 460, I suggested to the couple of you folks at the end of the meeting. You got that big, almost complete academy area right near the Waffle House. And I don't know how much it would cost to amend a little bit of that and make a parking ride there. Then if people come along and go off that bus, when it comes in at 2:30 in the morning, they'd have a place to get a bite to eat and keep warm until the bus shows up, or when they dismount the bus, or light the bus, and they could go in there and grab something before they'd eat. That would be a perfect spot, it's out of the way, and it's convenient for the Megabus people to... That is not the main focus of what I came up here to speak to you about. Your agenda indicates that the school board will be presenting their budget this evening. This is offered out as a needs-based budget. I submit that most of it is a wants-based budget. Many items on the budget are wants and not needs. The taxpayers of this county also have needs. We need to have a break from the annual increases to our property taxes. We need to have money to pay for the increases in our personal healthcare premiums dictated by the Unaffordable Healthcare Act. Private sector take-home salaries have actually decreased. When you take into account these mandatory premiums, or as the United States Supreme Court, I refer to them as taxes, if you choose not to participate. Can we, health care systems, an institution everybody owns in this particular county, cancel all Medicare premiums or all Medicare plans as of January 1st? For those of you under sixty-five, you should be aware. Those of us who had that plan before, now have to go elsewhere to seek medical coverage. I now have to pay an additional $49 a month, which is close to $600 a year, that I didn't have to pay the last year or the year before. Our budget manager, Mark McRuder, reports that receipts of personal property taxes were less than expected. He referenced the fact that people were keeping their older vehicles instead of purchasing new vehicles. Taxpayers have to look at their personal bills and have less funds to buy new cars. We eat out less often, have less money to donate to charity, and have less money to buy goods from our local merchants. Why does the county and the school board insist on paying 100% of employees' personal medical premiums, as well as 100% of their retirement system contributions? No skin in the game for the employees of both these entities. When the school board budget is presented to you this evening, please do your due diligence and examine the school budget line by line. Question whether the items listed there are truly needs or merely wants. You decided two years ago we needed to build a new animal shelter. You claim we needed to replace the old shelter immediately. Is there any progress to report on that? How buttery were the animals we have in custody today anywhere a year ago when you laid aside a million bucks? They're still in the same dilapidated building. Did we break ground for the new building? Did we move the county garage to begin the process? Did we do anything with that million dollars that you took from the taxpayers, which we could have used for the items I mentioned earlier? The school budget consumes over seventy percent... The school budget consumes over 70% of the total county budget. Please do not accept the figures without questioning the needs versus the wants. The citizens expect you to be our financial stewards. You work for the citizens of this county, please show as you care. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it any other citizens who would like to address the board?
CNN coming forward, we'll close the public address session. Do we need a motion to move the addendum to after the work session?
Do we need a motion to amend the agenda?
We want to move the addendum to below when we come out of work session. After that, do we need a?
I think just a simple motion. So moved?
We had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Pits?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six items.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Pits?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gager?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six items.
Now consider a self-sitting work session. And skills gaps, I think Whitney, you're up.
Marty's going to lead.
Okay, Marty, well, both of y'all up.
Marty's going to lead, and Whitney's going to do the color analysis.
She's going to actually give you all the real stuff. I just came here with the fluff. I'll bring you greetings from the New River Mount Rogers Workforce Investment Area Consortium Board. Montgomery County is one of the 13 jurisdictions of that entity, and Chair Brown sits on that entity as our vice chair. The greetings. For several years, this body has been discussing the needs of our region's businesses and industries, and how do we meet those needs? Many of those businesses and industries are telling us that they could not find the workers that they needed. They did not have the skills that they required in order to move their businesses forward. So after a much, probably two or three years, they pulled together a committee of your peers, and Chair Brown actually sat on that committee, to discuss exactly what we wanted to study. What would be any skills gap analysis? And we came up with three things. Number one, we wanted to know what the region's economic drivers were. What industries were willing moving the region forward, by individual jurisdictions as well as by the whole region? We wanted to know what skills those workers in those industries would need to have to keep those businesses here, and to keep those businesses growing, to keep those businesses competitive. And then we wanted to know what was the region's capacity to meet those needs. So in January of 2013, we signed a contract with Virginia Tech's Office of Economic Development to do a skills gap analysis, and Whitney is here to give you a little bit of an update about that. But I do want you to recognize that the skills gap report is not the beginning. That's actually the beginning for us. Because we've got to pull together the whole workforce system, that's your K-12 system, New River Community College, we've got to pull together the other folks that feed into the workforce, Department of Social Services, Department of Rehabilitative Services, the Workforce Investment Act programs, and how do we actually begin to develop a talent pipeline? And we need all of our jurisdictions to take a part in that conversation, to not only recognize what's going on within their own jurisdiction, but to recognize what you do here, how it affects all the other 13 jurisdictions, and what they do, how it affects you. So with that, I am going to have Whitney speak to you. I do want you to know what you're just getting is a very small little highlight. On the 27th, Brenda Whitney, your Office of Economic Development Program manager, has been working on having a very special meeting so that she would have a little bit more time to discuss these findings. So thank you very much for having me.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Mr. Meadows, and fellow board members. My name is Whitney Bonham, and I'm a specialist with Virginia Tech's Office of Economic Development. And as Marty mentioned, we were contracted to deliver these services. We've been engaged now with the web for well over a year, and we've really been excited about our findings for this study. Just be mindful of time, I'm probably going to speed up a little bit. Mr. Brown, is it too late to give you guys a copy of the executive summary?
Okay, thank you.
I was just wondering, does it just come up on the screen? It should be ready. Okay, is there?
Technical help's coming from the back.
Sorry about that.
About tea and coffee, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Just a little bit about our study. As Marty mentioned, this was for the workforce investment area, and it covered 13 jurisdictions, Montgomery County being on the north end and Bristol on the southern end of this. This was an area of 10 counties and 3 independent cities that we looked at. And our main objective in this skills gap analysis was to really enhance regional understanding of the workforce needs of employers in this region. The goal of this is better insights, not just for the types of jobs that are in demand, but rather what knowledge and skill sets lay below these jobs. This is really important because job titles and industries are constantly evolving, and we felt that as a region, having the baseline information of what knowledge and skills were behind the type of work being done in the region was really important to then share with our whole education community. So we looked at the whole career pathway spectrum as a whole, so K through 12, all the way through your post-secondary and graduate degree programs. Just a little bit about the region. We first wanted to get a really good understanding of what were the baseline skills of the population, so knowledge and skill sets. And then we drilled down specifically into analyzing a public major industry sectors, very deeply manufacturing and healthcare and social assistance. It was because in this 13 jurisdiction area, about 19% of the jobs and employment was correlated to manufacturing, 11% for healthcare and social assistance. Professional, scientific, and technical services, agriculture, and tourism were also other industry sectors that we looked at. These looked very different across the footprint due to the nature of, here, for example, Virginia Tech Corporate Research Center and some of the technology-driven investments here in this county have a different shape than this sector does, say, in Washington County, Smith County, West County, where it's more architectural and engineering professional services, just as an example. Our approach to this was really, it was new for us in our office, so this was one of the first times we really wanted to begin to combine our understanding of traditional economic development data and workforce data concurrently, because increasingly, people are becoming the competitive advantage to businesses. So we, we thought that this was, from a research side, very interesting. So we started out this whole study with conducting an extensive industry-to-occupation analysis, and from this, we began to ID the specific knowledge and skill sets behind the jobs. Of course, data can only get you so far. So the main driver of this was an extensive employer outreach process. We hit the road a lot in this project. As manufacturing was really an important part of this study for this whole region, we went through a lot of factories, because we needed to understand the process of how things were made. The same for healthcare. We needed to understand how the industry was changing and evolving to then begin to see which jobs may be most impacted by certain process or procedural changes. From that point, we then looked at the existing education and training assets available in the region, and this is where we began to ID the gaps. I'm going to walk you quickly through a couple of our major findings for manufacturing and healthcare. Again, as Marty mentioned, we'll be going really deep into what we found. It's extensive report, and we know there's only so much data, anybody can digest in one spiel, but we thought these might be some of the key parts of the story. An important component of this whole process, as I mentioned, was beginning to understand the dynamics behind some of our industries. So for us, this required taking a historic look as well as a forward look at industry trends. So what you see on the screen right now are the manufacturing subsectors of this region. The five colored bubbles represent the five largest employers for manufacturing in the region. The blue bubble that you see is a big driver. It's transportation equipment manufacturing companies. This represents about a quarter of all manufacturing employment. And that's something important I would like you guys to remember as we're moving forward through our presentation. Electrical equipment and appliance and component, that's a very important sector here in Montgomery County with several employers. Chemical, and then you'll see, those industries have remained relatively steady over the past decade. They've gone up and down in this whole decade period, but you'll see there's been some net stability for the most part in those industries. Furniture and machinery manufacturing, however, took big hits during the decade, and those were long-term systemic hits. And again, this was an important part of our study, as this region had gay acts and some of the traditional textile and furniture economies. We had to understand how the effects of dislocated workers over this 10-year period and before continued to impact the workforce. We thought that this was one of the most interesting phenomenas. Again, remembering the significance of transportation equipment manufacturing to being a driver of employment, we wanted to see how potential employment changes in that sector compared to the rest of manufacturing. So the maroon bars that you see are increases and decreases in employment in transportation equipment manufacturing. The orange balls, or the orange bars are other manufacturing industries. So you'll see that every two years, there were significant ups and downs that were occurring in the one sector. The lines represent the five top jobs within all manufacturing. The two lines that are highlighted were significant job titles that were related to transportation equipment manufacturing. It was team assemblers and assemblers and fabricators, which, again, is a very important driver. We wanted to understand specifically what were team assemblers in our region, because then we can understand the skills that these portions of people impacted more frequently possessed, which is where we got really nerdy with understanding some of this information. As I mentioned, this was a region that had a significant pool of dislocated workers, primarily from furniture and textile. We knew that in the past 15 years, they've gone somewhere. So we had the specific jobs that were most related to that with some labor market information. We began to understand what were the knowledge and skills that those workers needed to first transition to our current employment state. And using the team assemblers model, we began to understand, judged on the types of employment and places where the team assemblers were, for example, the specific knowledge and skill sets they may bring, to then ID other new types of occupations that were closely related. We applied this process throughout all industries that we examined in this study. So it's looking essentially at first cousin jobs, and then understanding the skill sets behind those. How do you take those gaps between the current employment as well as a future opportunity to then prepare our workforce? Healthcare, this is another interesting slide. We actually broke up the proverbial healthcare and social assistance category to begin to understand where was growth and decline occurring in that sector. We knew that there was a lot of talk over the last 10 years that this sector had grown in a lot of places, including this region. It did grow overall as a sector, but you'll see that the individual parts of that sector experienced some different trends. So hospital employment actually declined in this region as the nursing home and residential care facility. Embolatory healthcare services is your physician's offices primarily, and some other supportive related to the clinical model. Social assistance is also in that sector, and that's where most of the job growth in this overall region occurred. This is important, but causes staffing patterns for healthcare in these industries all look very different as well. Some, as you can see, we began to look at wage differences across those sectors, and how that also plays a part to the overall regional story as well. Here's kind of an example of how we began to ID the gaps between jobs. We used a common example here to show you of LPNs to RMNs. What exactly does it take, short of the actual formal credential, to get you from being an LPN to an REN? We came up with some thematic categories through which we then also went to the employers to validate, to learn a little bit more about. Customer service confidence, this was one that came up really big in the overall region, both for the overall baseline regional workforce, as well as for this specific sector as well in this particular occupation. A lot of this was being driven by the fact that hospitals and healthcare systems were now increasingly being driven for competitiveness based on patient surveys. That was affecting certain types of funding mechanisms, and so therefore, the healthcare system saw we'll need to train everyone from the desk clerk to the nurse to the doctor on patient customer service. And what we discovered about Montgomery County in this that was interesting, again, we'll be going deeper, but of course, the growth of the Corporate Research Center is very much a big part of the story around the Blacksburg community. This, as far as the specific knowledge and skill sets needed there, of course, it is very diversified based on the specialization of the numerous companies that are located there. The proximity to the university and the emergence of these regions for technological-based businesses has been an important part of this story. But an overall skills need in this is that employers in this particular sector are increasingly facing competition from other regions that can pay higher wages. So getting the cream of the crop for the specialized candidates, based out of coming out of the university or university-affiliated opportunities, are very competitive candidates to a lot of other regions, so wages. That's something we really unfortunately can't control, but it's important awareness. Manufacturing in this region is, you're still the number one county in all 13 of these for manufacturing, as well as healthcare employment. So this county is an important driver of this overall region in both of those industries. What's really interesting is this is one of the first communities where starting to see the transition to the technologically-based company slash manufacturing. So a company that looks a lot like a professional, scientific, and technical service company looks a lot like a manufacturer in some instances. Companies like Aeropro are a great example. And our strategies and recommendations. We have four main strategies, which all have multiple approaches. This sheet of executive summary I passed around is our beginning, and we invite anyone who may have comments on this or would like some further explanation, please contact our office as we're finalizing this. But really, we're looking at instances for developing this pipeline of younger workers. And through this, there's really establishing greater connectivity between K through 12 and the business community is an important part. We found some great examples during this research process. Passport Atlantic is a transformer, switch company located in Bland County, Virginia, and their company leadership actually took a very active role of partnering with their juniors and seniors at their county high school in setting up a training program to help provide students with exposure to on-the-job learning experiences, and this was important to cultivating soft skills for working in an industrial environment. And what was really cool about this is that the company actually supported scholarships for anyone who completed the program to go on to community college. So it was a really neat model. Again, helping students to become more... juniors and seniors at their county high school in setting up a training program to help provide students with exposure to on the, on the job, learning experiences. And this was important to cultivating soft skills for working in an industrial environment. And what was really cool about this is that the company actually supported scholarships for anyone who completed the program to go on to community college. So it was a really neat model. Again, helping students to become more aware of the types of employment that are, is available in their community is another important strategy and approach that we're recommending. A bright spot here about applied learning, particularly with the math and technology curriculum, was an example we found between Montgomery County Public Schools and community housing partners. The second strategy really is looking more at the workforce system coordination. So how, had this, a lot of great structures already in place in our workforce training system, but how can we better coordinate and make these more accessible and more efficient? So a lot of this was really refining how you can bring certain services together and share across the region, for lack of a better understanding. Whitfield Community College had an incredible, from what we've heard, design and drafting program at one point, and it was something that we found a lot of employers in that area were valuing. But the college actually suspended that program because they couldn't really get enough student participation and support funding at a program. So it was something that employers were valuing, but yet there was the challenge. So these are the kind of solutions that we're posing back to the communities is how can we work around this? Your employers really appreciate this, they value it, but how, how can we help either get more students in these programs or provide these in shared models which can benefit greater numbers of people and make the program more sustainable? A couple more examples, really going on into number three in the broad sense, that's the regional training to industry, again, bridging this more responsive, real-time, real-time collaboration. The plug-in model at, at New River Community College was another bright spot in this area we found. This was helping individuals to get their GED and to get on the job experience as well as a short-term credential. And the fourth one was using this information. So we had a ton of data out of this study and a lot of company feedback. And our office is really interested in how, how can this information help your county? How can, some of the data we're providing is to shore economic developers. And so that's what we're doing right now in the process of coming out to the communities is bringing our information and working with, how, how can we tailor, how can we tailor this research to help you then use this either in writing grants or putting together partnerships? So with that, I appreciate your time very much tonight. We've enjoyed the collaboration we've support, we've appreciated the feedback and engagement of Chairman Brown, and we look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, do you have any questions? I know Whitney threw a whole lot of information at us this evening, but that's just a little bit of the information that you had. If you got the whole dose, you'd be here for a little while. But if you have any questions regarding her presentation?
I just have a comment. I think it's really exciting, I mean, just to hear what you've done overall. I mean, I can see how it would all connect, and I don't think we've ever had anything like this to have this kind of information available. So this is, this is good.
It is exciting, you know, one of the most beneficial outcomes of this, as we've seen, is, you know, it's up a moment being an economic developer. By beginning to understand the content, the concentrations of people who know how to do certain things, that's just another part of your, your whole positioning yourself as a region for new opportunities.
And the idea to have, you know, students come through and actually be able to find job placement within their communities and not have to leave their communities to go other places.
Yeah. It's, it's been really interesting in this region in particular. The study area did border multiple, it bordered three states. So that was an incredible challenge in that we looked at the flow of people. How were job opportunities in Tennessee, for example, impacting where people were living and working and traveling? The same here in this area, you know, how is the connectivity between Reddick and Blacksburg? How does that affect, you know, what's going on sometimes in our neighbor's yards can either put pressure on our own systems or can provide us new opportunities as well. So we began to also start to pull in some of that effect too. That's coming as we're releasing the report. And we urge you, please, look at the website as the final report's coming out for the Workforce Investment Board. It'll be a great resource we have moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, the question as well, and you know, this is, I understand this is kind of a slice of, you know.
Oh, yes.
So, but I'm curious about, you know, the data that you presented has, is mostly about employment trends up to 2012, and you know, for, for skills gap analysis, right, is that, you know, you don't want to train them for the jobs of yesterday, you want to train them for the jobs of tomorrow, right? So, so maybe on the 27th, you're going to talk about this, but maybe you could just talk a little bit about kind of where you see Montgomery County's kind of employment trends going in the foreseeable future. And if you could also talk, I'm curious too, because, you know, I know historically, you know, we're in this workforce development area, but the way that this is set up, you know, it's, it's a historical, it's a historical situation that we look southwest, right? But the way that Montgomery County is going, it's, it's going to start looking northeast.
Northeast. Exactly. And, you know, looking, looking in as many directions as possible is something that, you know, we felt really intriguing about this. As far as projections, most of our projections, we, we tried to stay within a three-year of confidence, so through 20, we look 2012 to 2015, 2016. We did have some information that looked a little further, but one of our most interesting aspects of this study is, hold on, I can actually show you. See, these types of mappings that we did, we did those for most of the top jobs in each of these target sectors. And what we did was, is we looked at what were the most compatible occupations to them for current employment, and then we also looked at potential core areas. So where were some areas of interest and priorities? For example, how can you transition LPN not to an RNN, but how can you transition LPN to a biotechnician? Those are the type of things that we began to look at. It was very interesting because we could provide these thematic categories, but then the real engagement with industry, the talking to the companies, in some cases, we even talked to professors to learn more about how new process changes in manufacturing, for example, were going to impact workforce. So if you're automating a lot of your processes, you better make sure that, you know, any technician level people you're bringing out, they're jacks of all trades. And you'll see, that was one of our, when we went through the specific skills needs, the industrial, proverbial industrial maintenance category is really bringing, bringing in someone who is aware of industrial electricity. But we found in this region, it's not just that, it's hydraulics, pneumatics, fluids. You have to have the spectrum.
Wow.
The other thing to remember is, you have a workforce that's key. Okay? So what are their skills? Because that's what you got to market today. Because that's, that's your product today. Now, you've got your behavioral system, if you find well, you've got the potential to have something totally different. But today, it's what is your product? And then the other concern is, if you're looking at all those skills.
Can you step to the microphone, please?
Of course.
Yeah.
If you're looking at all those skills that people have and the skills that these other, these up-and-coming jobs need, what's the shortest time to train somebody? What's that shortest distance? Because that's what you really want. When people lose their jobs, the model that we turn around and we completely turn them into something else, number one, is time-consuming and, and resource-consuming. It costs a lot of money to turn somebody completely around.
That's true, but you also have human beings that you're trying to, these aren't, these aren't machines, right?
No, they're not.
So you can't necessarily, hold on, you can't necessarily force them into a job that they're compatible for. You have to get them into a job that they're, they're willing to do, they're able to do, and that they have some sort of...
There's, and all workforce development, there is always the aptitude and the interest factor. And that's where you're going. It's not just what do they used to do, but it's, it's their interest as well. But the other thing is, is the reality, we lose a lot of people off that ship because somebody sent them down the road and then really, that wasn't where their interest and aptitude met. And that's not one occupation or one skill set. I mean, that usually ends up being this whole, we're at, of things that people can choose from. The trick is, is to look at that as you, the other thing is, is people are keep trying to re-completely invent themselves. We, here's what we used to be, and now we want our community to be this. But you still have a workforce here, that that's what you started with, that's your basis for right now. And we don't want to leave them behind. You want to bring them along. Whatever Montgomery County and this whole region turns into, you want to bring your whole workforce with you. So all of your citizens benefit from those moves into new technology and other things. And we don't often think about that, and this is an opportunity to see what skill sets that they have, and how can we help bring the whole workforce along with us?
If there's big gaps, you know, one of the, the big pieces that we've been looking, as Marty said, is putting people into the shorter-term employment. But by working through, understanding the skills now, we're just not looking in and out at supply and demand for the job again. It's once we have this information on what are the skills behind the jobs, we can then build the whole pathway through K-12, strengthening that. So by the time that the new opportunities come here, you have a workforce that's flexible enough to do a lot of things and invent their own, invent their own opportunities in a lot of ways too. It's just, it's raising the bar for everybody.
Yeah, I don't think I was suggesting otherwise. I, I, well, I know I wasn't suggesting that, so I'm not going to apologize for that. But I, but I do have a concern kind of more conceptually than, I mean, you know, and I, and I hope that this board will take that into consideration with whatever we go forward, is that K-12 is not job training. Like, whatever it is, it's not job training. It, it's part, that's part of it, you know, but it's also to create and educate citizenry, which is participate in our democracy as well. I mean, that, that's its main ultimate goal.
Oh, yes.
And they are, of course, we want them to have jobs and we want them, to bring them along, because these are the workforce that are...
They're not job training. They are skills training though.
Reading and writing is just as important as math.
Learning and math is critical to your workforce needs, and it starts, that is your building block, that K-12 system.
I, I understand that, and you're explaining this to professors, so I understand reports of education. Thank you. So, but, you know, this incessant focus on, you know, this kind of vocational training is, is a little bit worrying in some ways, especially when we, we insert corporations into our public education system in order to train them for the jobs. I mean, we're, we're basically paying them, we're tax, using taxpayer money to train them for jobs that they will ultimately take in another corporation. So, but that, that's another thing entirely. The point I was just making initially before this, this whole thing got sidetracked is, I am glad that you're thinking about a few years out, because that's exactly what we need to be doing, is not necessarily thinking about what skills are needed for the jobs that we have today, or certainly not the jobs we have yesterday, but the jobs we will have tomorrow. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? One thing about it, Whitney and Marty, they're probably, they're going to be going to all 13 jurisdictions, making the same presentation, so...
Now we've altered them a little.
You've altered them a little, okay. So, thank you for coming and making the presentation.
Thank y'all for being here tonight. Okay, we're going to, we're going to take a, I think, we'll be back at nine, I mean, 8:45. We're going to take about a six-minute break. And so we'll start probably at like 8:45. Get started again, and now we're on item two, School Board FY15 Budget Presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Biggs, and the rest of the board members. My name is Wendell Jones, and I'm pleased to represent the Montgomery County Board of Chair. And with me this evening, I have Dr. Lois Graham, Dr. John Staben, and Kate Milano, who will be supporting me in the presentation today of our 2014-2015 school budget. I just have a few brief opening comments, and I'm going to defer to the experts related to the budgetary item in the school board's budget. I do want to begin by just talking a little bit about the goals of our budget this past year, and the superintendent presented to us as she was working with her staff. And they touched five categories, and those categories are to enhance student programs, to enhance salaries, to continue our focus on safety, and you heard much discussion about safety this evening, to be physically responsible through community engagement, and then our instructional expenditures. And we'll expand just a little bit on those goals by adding that we want to design and adopt the budget that preserves the programs for students to the greatest extent possible. We have a lot of programming needs in the budget. To adjust the compensation for all employees using a long-term salary plan that includes a competitive benefit package. To ensure proper funding allocations, that we maintain a safe and orderly environment for all students and all staff in Montgomery County facilities and transportation areas as well. To design and adopt the budget that reflects the physical reality of Montgomery County and maximizes the resources available and fully engages the community for public education. And to increase the percentage of expenditures for classroom teaching, teaching support, technology, and instructional materials. I could stand up here and we could talk, and everybody could talk about what is needs versus wants, we all have different definitions. The board asked the superintendent to bring forth a needs-based budget. I do not envy the challenge that this board here has before you in trying to come up with an operating budget, and also recognizing the tax increases that have occurred over the past several years. They have been impactful for sure. They've impacted everybody in Montgomery County. But we must look at what the state is doing to us, and even though the state has rewarded us with money, they also take it away when they reward us with money. And you will see that part of what the state has given, they have taken it away and have left us about close to $400,000 in the hole. When we look at what we need. And then when we add to it the things to enhance our programs, the things that we need to improve our salaries, the things that we need to adjust for maintaining a safe and orderly environment in our schools, where we need to be looking at everything within the budget, and then also make sure that we continue to stay on top of the technology and we continue to support our teachers, and we continue to make sure we have the right type of instructional materials, then you can understand why the deficit grows to nearly We have many challenges ahead of us with our budget, as well as you do. I would like to thank each and every one of you for your support over the past two to three years, even longer than that. This board here has gone above and beyond its call to help support education in Montgomery County and to help support all the other services that you must provide to the citizens of Montgomery County. When the state has continued to cut and to cut and to cut, you have stepped forward. Greg Metta's working with our superintendent has worked very hard and very creatively to ensure that we have the type of funding that we can have, and I commend Mr. Metta for his efforts in being creative with his, his way that he and his staff approached the budget, and also working with our superintendent to make sure that we do provide a safe work environment for our students and for our staff. There's no one on our board, the school board, that doesn't recognize the severe challenge that we have in Montgomery County with our taxes and that the challenge that you have before us. And with that, again, I thank each and every one of you for your support. I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we work through the 2014-2015 budget. The superintendent sends her regards. She may not be here in her physical body, but she is here with us, believe me, and she is working very hard behind the scenes to make sure that we're planning and doing the correct things for the students and staff in Montgomery County. Again, I thank you. At this time, I'm going to refer to Dr. John Staben, and he will give you the more detailed aspect of the 2014-2015 budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good evening, Chairman Brown, members of the Montgomery County Board Supervisors, and Mr. Metta. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you on behalf of Superintendent Blackburn about the Montgomery County Public Schools' proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. The budget development is a year-round process. We have faced six straight years in which budget development has been extremely challenging. This year, for the first time in the last six years, actual available funds meet the levels, meet the level of 2008-2009 budgets. However, it is exceedingly important to note that the budget as proposed by the previous governor includes mandatory requirements for expenditure that are unfunded mandates. Therefore, the available fund... Therefore, the available funds of $97 million are tied to set. So, to illustrate that, let's see if I can get this right. Okay. Thank you. But to illustrate the deceptiveness of the increased funding for Montgomery County Public Schools, I think a simple exercise and subtraction would be appropriate. So let me talk to the chart that's on the stuff in front of you. You see that there's a new state revenue in the amount of $2.4 million plus, and all the numbers that's under that are unfunded mandates, with the exception of the first one, which is a reduction in federal funding of an amount of $50,000 plus. But everything else are unfunded mandates, which brings us, as Mr. Jones referred to earlier, the amount of negative $468,438. So, that's just to give you an idea, the state, as Mr. Jones says, gives to us and they take it back in these unfunded mandates. So, how do diligence have been done? We have developed a budget that you see here this evening, based on five guiding goals, and obvious stated goals that Mr. Jones just referenced a few minutes ago. The first being to enhance student programs, improve salaries for our employees, ensure we have provided a safe and productive environment for our students, remain fiscally responsible through community engagement, and continue to provide the best available instructional material in our classrooms. You see a gap between available funds and requested funds in the amount of $5,169,114. The budget request is developed as a reality-based needs budget. When you face new demands such as increased student performance standards, the requirement to provide health care for an entirely new group of employees, requires to increase significantly with the funding for the VRS, and to manage an entirely new retirement system with existing manpower. And coming on the heels of five previous years of cuts, then it is clear that it will take more and more money to do our job. We want, and this community deserves, a school system that is competitive with other school divisions in the region and throughout the nation abroad. Additional resources are required for students and employees to continue to produce outcomes that are at least at the same level we are currently operating. The budget request for 2014-2015 includes additional items for funding as follows. Additional utility costs at New Auger Middle School, and utility rates in the amount of 3% increase at $125,000. Replace one-time fundings for building, repair, and roof maintenance plan. We are asking to replace the one-time funds and allocate $250,000. Two additional buses to replace a aging fleet in the amount of $175,000. Math instructional enhancements for $88,000. Restore two math instructional coaches at a cost of $127,000 plus. This is also previously funded as a one-time money. Restore staffing in the end-school suspension program, which will cost $36,467, and restore the ITR team position to support technology for the cost of $63,000. After five years of not seeing wage increases, the state provided for a 2% pay increase for Montgomery County Schools employees this past year. However, the governor's proposal doesn't offer any provisions this year for pay increases to make up for the stagnant wages between 2008 and 2013. It is also important to note that the state didn't refund last year, last year's pay increase in the upcoming budget. That's the budget that we're looking forward to see this upcoming year. Also, the budget proposed by the former governor calls for raises for state employees, but ignores the teachers of the Commonwealth. Therefore, in order to maintain and attract new highly qualified employees, we are asking for a 2.8% increase in salary enhancements. In the past, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors have been extremely supportive of the schools and instructional programs. Your support has been evidenced by your funding of capital projects through one-time funding sources, and your willingness to partially make up shortfalls created by decreased state and federal funding. Once again, we need your support to stay on target to prepare our students for the future. I know that you recognize an investment in our youth and in education makes a powerful impact and a powerful difference to our community, both now and in the future. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. I'm enjoying the opportunity to work in Montgomery County, and look forward to the continued support of what is, or what is in best interest of our students and the school system. At this time, Ms. Beyond will come forward and provide some additional details to the budget. Thank you.
I apologize, my presentation did not get forward, so if you'll bear with me for just a minute, I believe I can get it from my email. Sorry.
Do you want us to all look away while you put in your password?
I think it's dotted out, so I can't see it.
Hey, we couldn't remember it anyway.
Yes, but it's being videotaped.
No, okay.
Good to see my notes there, so, good evening.
Sorry for that delay. The first slide I'm going to talk about, the top half of this slide shows the total FTEs and expenditure portions of the budget from fiscal year 2009 to the current fiscal year 2014. While this slide does not have the high negative cost decrease you saw in last year's slide, it does show that we are still down on 84 FTEs from our 2008-2009 budget. The bottom half of this slide shows the revenue portion of the budget for the same time period. I have highlighted the state and county revenue-funded lines. The state funding has decreased $9.6 million over this time period. The Board of Supervisors has continued to support education and has increased their funding over the last six years.
Do we have any of this in the budget, or should we just be focused on, I think we're all trying to look to see if we can find it, is-
It's in there, but the format in the budget book may be slightly different. It is presented in some form or another in your budget books.
Okay.
So where do we spend our money? 88% of our budget is spent on salary and fringe benefits. On this slide, I'd like to draw your attention to the line with fiscal year 2008-2009 about halfway down the page. This is our peak year of $57.5 million revenue funding from the state. Since then, the state revenue has decreased $9.6 million. The state is not stepping up to the plate to support education. Our ADM, our average daily membership for March 31, 2015, is 9,475. This is a decrease of 77 students from the March 31, 2014 budget ADM of 9,552. The first two bullets on this slide are the most important. The governor's proposed budget contains no new money and does nothing to make up for past cuts. The governor's proposed budget includes technical updates for re-benchmarking direct-age public education budget for the 2014-16 biennium. As Dr. Staben mentioned, the next three bullets are the increases in the rates for the Virginia Retirement System contribution rate, the retiree health insurance credit rate, and the VRS group life insurance rate. The total cost of these three increases is approximately $1.5 million. The row at the top, line one, is highlighted in yellow. It is our largest increase in state funding. As part of the funding formula, the per-people amount increased for basic aid, and as I mentioned, MCPS composite index increased. These contributed to the increase in the basic state aid amount. On line 16, as has been mentioned, the compensation supplement received last year is not in the governor's proposed biennium budget, and there is no new money for compensation. The additional assistance funds are no longer included in the governor's proposed biennium, as they were related to changes that occurred in the 2012-2014 biennium.
Can I, can I pause me and ask a question about that previous line?
Yes, sir.
Just so, just a point of clarification, so the small amount of money that the governor put forward last year for the salary increase, he, in this budget, that small amount of money has now been taken away?
Correct. Line-
That's line 16.
16, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Line 43 on this slide shows that the funding increase for the MCPS proposed in the governor's budget is just over $2.47 million. Again, as Dr. Staben mentioned in his previous presentation, VRS increases, salary incentive funds no longer being available, and increases in insurance that we've lost one-time funding in year-end funds quickly add up to more than $2.47 million. This is the school board's budget request by function, which was forwarded to the county offices this week, this past week, and this is as presented in your budget books, behind the Budget Request tab. I don't have a page number stuck in my head. This is the school nutrition budget request. There's an increase of approximately $128,000. And then these would be the appropriate meal rates. These may change as we receive more information. We will take questions at this time.
I mean, the question about, I think it was the raise last year that was for, was it SOQ personnel that the state had put in, which was, I want to say about $400,000 or $500,000? And the board had to make up about a million four to give everybody that raise. Now, that part that the state put in last year, and just like what you said, is not there in this?
That is correct.
Yeah, it's almost like, I'm going to approve 5% for the employees if y'all do this, and when we do that, then they pull that 5% back.
Another thing, the re-benchmarking that takes place is only for the minimal, the SOQ positions, which every locality has more than that. So when they re-benchmark, it doesn't mean that it's for everything. It's only a small amount.
In a metric, you had pointed out that the, our composite index changed yet again, increasing, suggesting that we can pay more at the local level, is that correct?
The way I said it, actually, no, our composite index went down slightly. The portion that the state has to pay actually went up, and that was part of the reason that our basic aid amount increased.
Okay, okay, that's one.
This 2.8 increase, pay increase, is that for everybody across the board? Bus drivers, custodians, everybody?
Yes.
For everybody?
Yes.
Everybody gets the same?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With the increase in the health insurance due to Affordable Care Act, that concerns your employees that were the 30 hours, is that where this is all coming from? Like, you have to, you know, we were discussing this early in our workshop, and I had a feeling that maybe that had to do with your increase. Is that part of the increase for the health?
I don't have that line in front of me, I'm sorry, but, yes, the line dealing with the Affordable Care is, that amount, I think it's 1.2 million, is the, let's see, 1.2 million, yes. That is the amount that we estimate we would have to pay for health insurance for employees that work over 30 hours, in accordance with the Affordable Care.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So these are, these people who would, these would be new coveries, correct? That you're adding on, they used to be part, classified as part-time, not eligible, and now they are? Is that correct?
Right, they would become eligible under the Affordable Care Act, yes. They're currently not receiving the health insurance.
I have a few questions. One, I guess, in looking at, you listed under the state mandates, but I guess the Affordable Care Act is actually a federal mandate, not a state mandate, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and then, a couple of things I noticed that Chairman Jones mentioned was that being able to retain teachers. What is our, are we aware of what turnover that we're having as far as, not retirement, but where people are getting recruited to, say, go to Giles, go to Glasgow, go to Runop, or the like? Are we having retention issues with our teachers? And if so, what is the percentage of turnover, and not including retirement?
I don't have that percentage for you. I can tell you that, yes, we are losing teachers to other systems around us, and can get that for you.
That would be helpful to me. A couple of things, now, there were seven things I didn't see listed as savings in your budget. The two part-time security individuals that were at the old Blacksburg, or Blackford Middle School site, Christiansburg campus, that's roughly about $34,000 that won't need to be expended at this point in time, correct?
To my knowledge.
Or, did they keep the two part-time security guards when they moved back to Blacksburg?
Yeah.
In regards to, one of the things that we're looking at, is I understand when you've got a big budget, like you guys have, you have teachers who leave during the year, maybe are not replaced, their retirement, their insurance, the gaps that are created by those type of situations. I don't see that in, I guess, the overall funding. I guess last year it was around $240,000, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a normal process, though, and each year we lose some teachers, and we typically hire someone back that usually has less experience. And last year that was a large number, because we had some, we had a large number of individuals that left that were at the higher salary level.
Now, and maybe I'm wrong in thinking about past budgets, but it seems like there was been more rollover money in the past than there was last year, which was 239, if I remember correctly, approximately, rollover money that was asked to be appropriated on other things. Is that correct? Is that the rollover money, is that, that's money that wasn't spent, correct?
Correct. Well, I know that we used to put a line in our- Um, well, I, I know that we used to put a line in our, in the budget called September, called Salary Savings, and I don't know if we're still doing that when you came on the board, but that has really been eliminated or been minimized with the fact that we haven't been receiving any, any salary increases as far as what we've been carrying over year end. It comes from sometimes freezing our budget and other items as that.
So, it, let's say that Mary retires this year and you hire a new teacher at a lesser salary rate, that's obviously savings on your budget. Is that, where is that listed or how is that listed in your budget? I just, I don't see that at this point in time.
It wouldn't be.
Okay, so that savings, is it built in somewhere?
I don't know that you could really account for that in the budgeting process because you can't count on somebody retiring, right?
Well, one of the things that...
There's money to be drawn.
Right. In, in, in previous budgets, I want to say the rollover money was around four hundred thousand, and so we had two hundred and thirty-nine thousand in rollover money this previous year. And so, my question is, how are we accounting for that money? Where is that going? Now, I know with this year's rollover money, this board approved, and you asked for new employees to be hired with one-time money.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, we had two math coaches.
And, and there was some additional one-time, I guess, uses for that as well?
By one-time money, you mean the rollover money?
Rollover money.
Yes.
And none of that money was used on any maintenance issues? The two thirty-nine, maybe a small amount?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember. I don't believe any was. I know we carried over some of the four hundred thousand that you had for the, um, the capital projects.
In, three years ago, when they sent me off to Board Supervisor School, one of the things that they, they had accounting there for us, and they said, whatever you do, don't use one-time money to hire employees because you're getting yourself in a hole. You're going to have to lay these people off if that money doesn't increase or that money comes in. And that's something that has been followed up with our staff. Has that, was that discussed with your board in regard to the fact that you're going to have to lay those people off because it's one-time money?
Yes.
And so, were those folks told, this is one-time money, we may not have this money, you may not have a job next year?
Actually, our board decided, talked at length of what to do with the one, with the end-of-the-year money. Part of that was math coaches, part of it went to math initiatives because we have some schools that are credited with, with morning, and we certainly want to address that. So, we used some of that money to purchase programs as well. The one-time money that we used for the math coaches, we do, we do want to restore and hopefully put that in our budget, but there was relegation. The board did talk about, yes, this is the one-time money with the hope that this year would be a better, um, year financially. So, whenever someone's hired that first year, their first year of hire, they know that there's that possibility. In this particular case, the individuals that were hired already had teaching positions, and they moved into the math coach position, so there would be a domino effect if we had to actually lose someone, it would be a first-year teacher.
But, again, they were told that those positions were temporary, similar to when, I believe, with the stimulus money two years ago, with that money that was given to the federal government, those were used to, that one-time money was used to hire employees as well, correct?
There wasn't. We were unable to keep many of those positions as, as the year went on, yeah.
As far as, and I'm looking at, you've given us a really good five-year look-back period, and it seems to be that our student population is basically remaining stagnant at least over the last five years. Is that fair to say?
I would say so, some fluctuation.
And as far as our FTEs, I know you saw that in 2008, and I guess if we were to have a ten-year look-back period, is that something that you could provide us as far as the FTEs from 2004 to 2014?
I'm sure HR could, um, could pull that information.
That would be helpful as well. One more thing before, is I didn't see in the budget, there's some cost savings now that we are not, where we're not busing the kids to the Christiansburg site of the Blacksburg Middle School. I did not see those budget savings in, in your budget, or are they listed somewhere?
Don't know that that's a budget savings.
It, it's fuel costs.
Costs have gone up.
So, it's a, is it a Y?
It's a Y.
Okay. All right, at least that's what you're expecting to, as a budget. I think that covers my question, sorry.
Quick question about the health insurance. It says you're expecting about a ten percent increase in overall health insurance costs, and that's...
That's a, that's a guess, the ten percent. It could be more.
Yeah, an estimate, yeah. Now, I know that the school board has talked about moving from a fully insured to a self-insured plan, and there, there might be some cost savings accounted for that. I don't, I don't know what your plan schedule is. Would that, would those savings potentially be realized within this fiscal year budget? Or would that be something that would be...
From what I've heard, that first year, it probably will not be realized, which is the same thing.
Okay, okay, so that's something that we might look for next year, but not, not in this coming budget. Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Got some reading to do.
Yeah, we got some reading to do, but, uh, thank you, and thank you all for being here. Well, we'll move on to item three, Senate Bill 252. This is an item that Supervisor Gabriel had asked that we include for discussion this evening, so we've attached some information for tab C, but I'll let you take it from there.
Yeah, I didn't, um, you know, this is something that, my understanding, right, is that this Senate bill's now, it's now passed the Senate, it's on to the House, so it's, we don't know exactly what's going to happen there. Um, you know, I was curious about what, A, what impact this would have, since it does affect our ability, it empowers, I understand, to extend who we can offer health insurance to. And so, I just wanted to have a little bit of discussion. I mean, to me, I mean, you know, health insurance is a moral issue more than anything else, is that the ability to have access to, to health insurance is, you know, too many people are without it, and so if we are able to offer more benefits to people, to allow more people to get the healthcare they need, then this is something that maybe we might be willing to offer a letter of, letter of support and send it to our, our delegates who are considering this at the, at the present time, but, but at least I wanted to bring that, this to everyone and, and see what everyone thought, and maybe hear from either the county attorney, the county administrator, what potential impacts this might have on us.
Do you have a question, or are you coming?
I mean, what this statute does, if it's adopted, would just give us the authority, should this board elect to, to widen who we provide healthcare to, um, from, uh, like a dependence thing. So, you have your employees, and right now we have employees and dependents, and this, this act will allow employees, dependents, plus one additional adult. And so, what it's addressing is the partners, you know, of, um, people who are same-sex, marriage, or, or living together. And so, the, it doesn't necessarily say that, but it would allow our employees to designate an adult to be also covered under the healthcare. Now, what the act says is that we wouldn't pay that cost, that they would have to pay to come under our healthcare, so we, we wouldn't be required to pay for them, we would just be required to offer to them. If we, if we were required, we'd have the option to do that, as we're saying, if this is adopted in its present form.
Does it have to be a household member? And I haven't looked real close enough to be able, does the individual have to be a household member?
No. And, and, and that's kind of the problem with this, as law is, is, when it says one adult, it, it, that's basically all it says, one adult, it has to be someone living there. And so, it's not very defined, and I think, um, I think Carol talked with some VACO people about it, and there were some people in the state about some of the concerns, you know, about, you want to talk about what you heard? Those are just possibilities because of how vague it is. Now, we could, we could possibly make ours maybe a little bit more detailed. We talk about adult, maybe somebody who lives in a household or something.
I asked Dean Lynch if VACO had taken a position on it, and he responded that they had not taken a position, but what he forwarded to me was the assessment from the State Department of Human Resources Management. Their concern was that it may lead to adverse selection. Currently, employees must document their legal relationship with the dependents before the dependents are covered. There is no certainty that dependents newly eligible under this bill will have a legal relationship to document. This leaves open the possibility that employees will attempt to cover individuals such as friends and neighbors with serious illness, could create additional state costs since the state contributes toward the cost of dependent coverage. That's only related to state employees, and that's just the opinion of the State Department of Human Resource Management. That's all the information I have. I have the other impact.
But Marty, we would have the ability, this would, this would allow us to, to craft a, um, a, a, a policy that, that would be suitable to us, to require them to be living in the same household, or...
I would think so, yeah. I mean, I mean, it's, it's going to come down to, I believe, if it's adopted, exactly it's...
Yeah, with the exact language.
Yeah. I mean, but I would think you would be able to craft it so long as, you know, it's done in an equal way, or it's a way where, you know, one, but one group may not be discriminated against in another, in another way. So, you, it had to be equal in the way you apply it. But, yeah, as Carol pointed out, the difficulty is, is how do you define adult as, when you put, when you're allowing them to be covered under the dependent care? So, you know, it's possible, though, there's a way, if we do end up going that direction, this authority is granted, if it is discussed, if that's the House, but, um, then maybe a way to craft that to make it more, more defined.
What, what is the difference between if you've got a man living with a man or a woman living with a woman, that if they can be covered, what happens if you have a man living with a woman?
That would, it would be an adult, and I think that would still be covered if, you know...
That's what I'm saying. I haven't heard anybody classify that anywhere along the land. I would assume so, too, but, uh, is that true?
You just moved in a good friend of yours into your household.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. You know, one of them could, you know, somebody could come along and say, hey, I'm, I know you're a single man, or you're a single woman, I've got cancer and I need help. So, suddenly, you've got somebody that might not be eligible otherwise, suddenly come in and got real good insurance.
Well, they'd still be, they'd still have to absorb the cost, I mean, we don't have...
They would be, they would have to pay for the insurance.
They'd have to pay for the insurance, but that's a real cheap compared to a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars of, of, uh, care.
Yeah.
Or more. That might be just dropping a bucket away to top.
That's true, but I'd rather that person with cancer have health insurance and be able to get the care they need than, you know, even if it's going to cost us a little bit, a little bit of money.
Well, one might be good, what if you had twenty?
I would rather twenty people not die than...
I had a question. We were saying that, it sounds like this is sort of a generalized thing right now, and I don't know, I agree that we don't know what's going to happen to it in its final form, but, um, I thought that the locality could not do, how does it work? I thought we couldn't do our own thing. Like, I thought you couldn't supersede the state, or you couldn't, don't you have to do what they say?
Right. And what this act, if it's adopted, will grant you the authority to offer a more, or more expanded insurance, oh, right, insurance to a more expanded, uh, defined dependent. Because, I mean, what it says in the act, it says, for purposes of section, dependents means individuals, including qualified adults, recognized as dependents by the locality. So, the locality can recognize a qualified adult as a dependent.
So, you could have your elderly, you could have your elderly mother as a, you said, as a second insurance? If she lived with you?
Like Gary pointed out, it could be, you know, it could be a living girlfriend. You could recognize her as, even though there's no legal relationship there like we have now where it's got to be husband and wife, or a, or a child.
But, but, I'm sorry, so is this saying that, that it's up to the locality to define what a qualified dependent is?
Yeah.
This is giving us the authority to do that?
Yeah, I think that would suggest that. It would give you some, some leeway to say, yeah, we're going to allow qualified adults, but we're going to define what, what relationship they have from a dependency. I mean, they, they live in a household, they have to prove that.
And so, if they came in with something like, you know, cancer, or heart disease, or something like that, they cannot be denied coverage, so then your, your, I guess, then, I think Carol mentioned it, like, like if you had a group insurance thing and, and you had a lot of people come in, it could drive your rates up, right? Is that part of the problem?
Well, yeah, I think that's what's...
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what, was it, VRS, was it, VACO? I'd say VACO would identify.
Yeah, I know we didn't talk about this at the VACO board. I was unaware this was even around until Matt let us know.
There's always the, the risk of, of taking a big hit on, you know, serious illness.
Well, is there any risk to us from a legal standpoint if we're the ones that define dependency?
Well, you got to do it in a nondiscriminatory...
You can't prohibit people from being...
Right, yeah, you can't do that, yeah. You can never disqualify people because of their illness.
Right.
It'd have to be some type of, uh, it'd be, be something you'd be very careful with.
To answer Supervisor Gabriel, you know, we've, we've done research, Carol reached out to VACO on it, we've not done an assessment of what the impact may potentially be to the county because we really don't have any idea if we open that door, how many folks could step through it. It is, it is true that the premiums for those folks would have to be paid, but then, being a self-insured plan, I have, you know, there's no way to really assess what the risk, the risk may be in terms of additional cost to the plan.
Yeah. Well, I mean, this is, to me at least, I mean, from everything I'm hearing, at least is my understanding, is that this is simply, this bill would simply, if it were to pass, which, you know, who knows, and what would happen to it in the House and all that stuff, but it would simply allow us to, give us more authority to define who we cover. And it would, then it would be, it's not like it would automatically happen, we would have to actually take action to decide to expand our coverage. And we would, we would have to set the parameters, and we would have to figure out exactly who, how we'd want to set those parameters, and what legally we would be able to do if we wanted to limit those, what, what a qualified dependent is, or who a qualified dependent would be under this. That's correct.
Other comments?
The other thing that's in here is, it also allows localities provide health insurance to dependents of voluntary fire and rescue. Right now, we can provide insurance to voluntary fire and rescue, but evidently, we weren't allowed to provide that same insurance to their dependents, and, and this, the way it's written now would actually adds that, and the dependence of such members of voluntary fire and rescue, so it does grant that authority as well.
So, all the rescue spots throughout the county would be able to have? Right now, if we were to expand that, if we were to...
Yeah, right now, we could insure them, but we can't insure their dependents. Now, if this changed, if this was, we could then insure them and their dependents.
But we don't insure them now, right?
I don't think so, no.
Not health insurance.
Not health insurance.
We do, um...
We do, yeah, we do life insurance.
Workers comp.
Workers comp.
Ready to move on, or go out of work session?
Well, would there be, I mean, before we, before we move on, I mean, would there be support if, under the next item on the agenda, I believe, is the dendum, I mean, if I were to, to request a resolution of support that be sent to, to delegate some Yoast, and Tabeed, and Rush, saying that Montgomery County supports this expansion of the local powers, local powers, authorities? authority to expand health coverage to our citizens? Would there be, I mean, would there be general support or would there not? I mean, again, I mean, this, to my mind, right, I mean, this is, this is a good first step and it doesn't require us to do anything. It just will give us at some point in the future the authority to do that if we, if we so decide.
Is there not gonna be time that we can vote on doing that in the future?
If it passes, then we can decide if.
Right. Yeah, just asking for support for the bill, not that the county takes the steps.
No, 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 no. Just, just to say that we would like to see this passed and then if it were to be passed, and I mean, the only, the only concern, right, is that, you know, the legislative session is already more than half over and so if we were to wait to the next meeting, there's good chances it's already passed the House and they wouldn't have heard from us.
Well, and I guess before we go out and work session, we at least can do consensus that, one way or the other, in supporting it. So do we have consensus?
I would know.
Okay. No, no?
I mean, I guess I could support that the concept is to give localities authority that they don't have at the present time. Now, I guess my question is, I guess I'm not sure how the whole thing's gonna play out in the end because we don't know what's gonna happen or, you know, who knows? Maybe something already happened we don't know about. So I guess what we're doing is, like, if we're supporting it, we're supporting the concept, but it's not supporting that in Montgomery County, we're going to go out and do something like this at this time. We're not supporting that. We're supporting just the concept of the bill. That's what you're trying to do.
That's all I'm asking, is if we were to support the concept of the bill to allow the extent, I mean, very, you know, very bluntly, at some point, were this to pass, I would ask us to consider extending coverage. Because again, I mean, I see this as a moral issue, is that we're, we are theoretically denying people access to healthcare that we could otherwise provide for. And I understand there's a cost to that, but some things are more important.
And because the bill was to pass, it don't mean that we're required to do anything. We don't have to do anything.
Absolutely, no.
Yeah. And so I would imagine that if it was to pass, our staff would do some kind of study and come back with some information for us to move forward or move down, whatever, backwards. Mr. Tuck?
I look at it a couple of different ways. One, we can have the staff evaluate that and then also keep it in mind whether I wanted to see the Affordable Care Act passed or not. It's here. And the things about the insurance shopping are gonna be a lot less. If somebody's got cancer, they're gonna go out and get a policy and they're not gonna be able to be turned down. So I think that factor may be less. But there's a couple of things that I like about this. If we decided we had some volunteers who were fire and rescue, that they wanted to put their kids on the policy, that would give them the right. And not saying that we were gonna do it, I would wanna know what the numbers are, but I like having the flexibility to at least think about something because right now, we can't do it. And if, let's say that I, things were a little bit different, but let's say my son was 26, 27 years old and no longer covered under the Affordable Care Act, maybe I would wanna add him as a dependent if he was a household member. So I think it gives us a flexibility to at least look at, and so I'm in favor of it at that point in time. I understand where Gary's coming from and he's worried about the dollars and cents, but we're not voting on doing it yet. And so that's why I would say...
And that's, and that's the problem that I have, is that there's time that we can support it in the future if it passes.
But it may not pass unless we say, "Hey, look, we support it." Now, maybe they won't even listen to us, or maybe they will. I don't know. But it's something at least that we can talk with on out and say, "This is where we're coming from and here's some aspects of the bill that we really like." So I, my consensus would be to vote in favor of it. In favor of supporting what the bill is...
Send in a letter.
Right.
Okay. So, only if we're gonna have consensus. Okay, we're ready to go out of work session?
So moved?
Second. Motion and a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Ms. Bees?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Bees?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Four ayes, two noes.
Thank you all.
Any other things? Okay. Now, we'll move to the county attorney's report.
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
You sure?
I'm fine.
Okay, gone once, gone twice, gone. County administrator's report.
Two quick items. Emailed everyone earlier today announcing the hiring of a new planning director, Ms. Karen Blake.
Karen Blake.
Karen Drake. I'm sorry, Karen.
It's been a long...
Karen Drake from the town of Blacksburg. Karen's been there for seven years. She spent five years before that, however, in James City County and has had a wealth of exposure to a lot of the issues that we're gonna be dealing with in the future. Very glad to have her on board. Had a number of very qualified candidates, so very pleased to have her join in the team. The other thing I was just gonna mention is we are closely monitoring the weather this week and any alterations to schedules. If they're needed, we'll let you know as soon as we know them, but Wednesday afternoon and Thursday morning could be a little bit of a challenge for us. That's all I have.
Okay. Supervisor Biggs.
Well, I just wanna mention that Ms. Perkins isn't here tonight because her husband has been in the hospital and is now in rehab and she's with him. And then, let's see. Oh, I wanted to ask about the letter for Mr. Pendleton. Have we, have we sent that yet?
I need to check with Judy.
Okay. What made me think of this? I got a little thank you card from his wife. Okay, I'm just gonna report on lobbying. Mr. Meadows and I went to Richmond and between the two of us, we were able to contact Senator Smith, Senator Edwards' aide, Delegate Rush and Delegate Yost and Delegate Habib. We didn't come back with any money, not even a nickel, but we did contact them all. We talked to them and we, we asked that they please, please do not send unfunded mandates and please keep in contact with us about issues that would affect us locally. And we found out about one issue that they'd already passed that will affect us and have to be paid for, but that's just a minor detail. But what I was glad about was the fact that we were able to cover all them. We were also able to meet the governor, lieutenant governor, and the governor came and addressed the whole VACO VML crowd. And I got to talk to the Secretary of Education. SOL reform seems to be in the wind. I hope it happens. I think some people are finally realizing that the children and the students are taking way too many tests and that the teachers are all teaching to the test and maybe we should be doing something differently. And so hopefully, there'll be some movement there. Then, the next day, Mr. Meadows and I attended this really good workshop and it was sponsored by Sands Anderson and Davenport and Company and it was on local government budget and finance success. And what was neat is there, this book was given to us and it's got all kinds of resources, emails and people, and we found out even about some funding sources that we weren't familiar with. And so I think it will be a valuable resource. I was particularly interested in, there was something in here about water. Mr. Creed, water. Grant's water. So anyway, we brought that back. We brought two of those back and it was very worthwhile. It ran on time. It started at nine and ended at 12:30 and Dan Segal just kept it right on time and everyone got to speak. They had the three ratings companies there, which I thought was really interesting and they talked about how they've changed their bottom ratings and gave us, you know, examples. And so I thought it was very worthwhile and it was free, free. So that was good. That was even better. So we did get that information. And it didn't leave out anything? Did we, we entertained, we did have the two towns. It was our turn to, to provide the dinner and for the towns and we had Senator Smith and Delegate Yost come to the dinner. So that was another way to talk to them, too. Delegate Rush had to attend the Pulaski dinner because he attended our dinner last year. So it was good to touch base.
It's a good visit. Supervisor Tuck?
Two things. Some of you may have read the editorial on regards to volunteers and I just wanted to point out, while I was doing the research, that I noticed that there was the number one responder for the Ryanair Fire Department was her own Todd King. And so he responded to the most calls out with Ryanair Fire Department, so I thought I would give him a...
But we gotta know how many.
You know?
Ninety-nine.
I was gonna say...
Ninety-nine. Ninety-nine, wow.
And so I wasn't sure. I didn't get that, those numbers from Neil, but as far as how many it ran, so that's good to know. But the other thing is, obviously, you can see from the folks who are coming here before us, the parking lot is a major issue. And in order to show our, I would like to at least start where, I think we're planning on getting an updated closed session in a couple of weeks, but then put it back on our agenda, either closed session or open session in the following month to try to, while the government rules are grinding slowly, maybe if we can push it on our agenda and keep putting it on our agenda and make it an issue with the state that we can move this thing forward and end this. Because all of it, you know, when we are, we're thinking about our children and you think you're going to school and then you see basically it looks like a tack team that is there within 50 yards of your school, it's a pretty scary thing.
Seen it in my school.
And so that's one of those situations where it's continuing and ongoing. From a public standpoint, it's been a year and from their standpoint, they haven't seen us make any moves. And we know that there's been a lot of things that are done in closed session and that we're moving forward, but I would ask that this board consider this to be a priority and be taking it up on a monthly basis until we get this thing done. And that's it.
Okay. Mr. Gabriel? Supervisor Gabriel?
Just one thing briefly, is that I believe when we were talking about stormwater last, was it last, last week? One of the things that Mr. Creed actually brought up was water quality and testing water quality when it was coming in, into the county, so we knew what we were dealing with. And then, you know, the spill that happened just over the border in North Carolina, it's flowing into Colash, spilling out for six, seven days, going into Danville and stuff like that. Just reinforce, and then, of course, coming on the heels of the spill in West Virginia as well, this is a, this is a real concern, you know, it's something that we really do need to be aware of. And so, you know, as, as we move forward with the stormwater, I want, you know, us to be very aware that we are, we are doing everything we can and a lot of, it's unfortunate that the situation's coming out of West Virginia and North Carolina is that they knew about these problems. They knew about it for a long time and they just decided they didn't wanna deal with them. And the companies decided they didn't wanna deal with them and now we're dealing with major catastrophes. So I wanna make sure, and I don't think this board would ever, would ever go that, go down that road, but, but I wanted to just kinda remind everybody about that, but, and that's all I have.
Supervisor King?
Well, I wanna relay some things from Mr. Tuck. I had several calls about your, about your little commentary in the Ronald Times that he read it in, on the internet, I think he read it, and said they appreciate you putting that out there. And still having a few issues out there on Old Sire Road, still getting calls out there. Them people's not happy at all with that.
I know that Dan Brew, who was the project manager, I guess, to help with that project, has been out there a couple of times and will continue to follow up till we get all that addressed. Part of the problem is some of the patching that needs to be done, we've gotta have a little bit warmer weather and we just hadn't been able to get that yet, so...
Yeah, that's why I told them today when they called me and they said they was promising there was gonna be a bunch of dust and stuff like there was on the gravel road. Said they believed they got a little bit more. Said, "Thank goodness, it's cold and frozen today."
Is that dirt glue? That was, that was the demonstration project we did and it may very well be that it demonstrates, it's definitely gonna be a demonstration project.
Okay. That was it, demonstrate.
Yeah, because it has to go through the seasons and that was one of the things I think we brought up at the beginning was, you know, we hadn't had it in this environment and what would happen. So, yeah, I can see.
Supervisor Creed?
Yeah, I've got one thing that kinda stood here and made a little note on. I have a letter from a constituent who, his mother is in pretty bad shape and asked her if she would move back to take care of her and she has moved back and trying to help her out and, you know, her mother was going to be qualified for not having to pay taxes on her home. Now, when the daughter moves in, she has enough income that her mother could pay taxes if she wants to stay there. And that, if that, you know, if that wasn't the end, if that was the end, then that'd be okay. But then you go and you find out that if she had someone come in other than her daughter, they'd pay. If somebody knocked into it, it wouldn't count against you. And something is wrong with a lot of our things that we do. You know, how can we punish people for doing good? You know, that just seems to me to be a wrong way to look at anything. If anybody, you know, if you buy a house, for instance, if me and whoever bought two houses side by side and paid something easy, a hundred thousand dollars a piece on it, sometimes in the next four years to the next assessment, if I was to make mine be dogged rundown, they'd probably go down on my taxes and you kept yours up good. They'd go up on yours. So, yeah, this is similar. Only it's different. It's totally different, but it's similar. You got a daughter that'll come in, take care of her mom, move in from North Carolina back up here and then gets here and is telling, "Hey, we can take care of your mom. You wanna go back where you came from and have one of these nurses come around every day to help them out?" I actually sent Lori a copy of this and it just, it's something that, he said, "We can probably do something to adjust that," but, you know, I don't know who this, I'm not asking anybody to do this, that or the other. I just think you need to think about it. You know, if we've got these people that hear, it's just like the insurance we just said that we were in favor of in a big way, is that we've got problems like this all over this county. This ain't... and then gets here and is told, hey, we can take care of your mom and you wanna go back when you can, go and have one of these nurses come around every day to help them out. I actually sent Lori a copy of this and it just, it's something that, he said, we can probably do something to adjust that, but, you know, I don't know whether, I'm not asking anybody to do this, that, or the other. I just think you need to think about it. You know, if we've got these people that hear, it's just like the insurance we just said that we were in favor of in a big way, is that we've got problems like this all over this county. This ain't the only one for anybody to think it is. But this is happening every day, not one or two, but by the dozens. That people are trying to come in and do the right thing and help their older parents and they penalize them for it. And somehow, that's just isn't right. And that's all I have.
I got a question.
Come here.
Is that a state or local thing? Is that something we have control over that we can change?
I think you do. There's, as you know, we can't do anything unless the state...
Right.
...is okay. And the state allows us, as you know, to give tax breaks to the elderly or disabled. And Gary's exactly right. The statute says if it's a nurse, a nurse professional, some sort, you wouldn't count it. However, that statute I'll change if you remember, they no longer have the limits anymore. They've come up with, they've pretty much given localities discretion to set their own limits. And they've also, I believe, I'll look at it again, but I think they've also put language in there where you can exempt out certain income. It's not counting toward those limits. And the type of person Gary's talking about, the person who moves into the house in order to prevent homeowners from having to go to a nursing home or some type of care facility, I think you would have the authority to allow that income not to count toward the income limits.
So we don't have that...
But right now, we don't have that in our ordinance.
So we don't have that?
I think that's an option. So that's something we can look at, because we always look at this ordinance, is it during the budget cycle that we look at? When do we look at it?
Tuesday and in the fall.
But I mean, that doesn't mean we can't look at it now. But I think they generally look at it in the fall. But that's something I think you could add to the ordinance and exempt out that type of income from that type of...
So is that what you're looking for consensus to look at it?
Just with our budget, I would love to see us do whatever we can to help these people and to help anybody that's in that type of situation. But, you know, I'm certainly for having them look at it and see if there's any way we can help them out, but that's up to everybody.
Do we have any idea of how many people in the county could be in that situation?
Not aware. No, but we could ask the commissioner and see if...
Say how many they turned down?
Yeah, yeah, see if she's sending inquiries, because I think she would know more so than anyone.
Chris has one.
Well, it seems to me, and I guess I volunteer to be guardian and conservator when there's not anyone else around as part of the things I, one of the things I do. It seems to me that if we could provide, let's say that Matt moves in to take care of his mom, that we could get a letter from a doctor saying that that was necessary to prove it so it's not being abused in that way. We could take that and then make that mother exempt from Matt's income along with providing that type of care.
Yeah, you could get an affidavit and it can be a form that they develop that the doctor would just fill in.
Fill it in and say that it's medical necessity for them to have a care provider and then have that person sign off on an affidavit that they're the ones providing that care.
It sounds...
That seems definitely reasonable. Cause more knows the federal government and filling out this forms, I don't know how, I'm an attorney and trying to get those things done is a nightmare.
And this wouldn't be an uncommon change. If you remember, we've tweaked this ordinance over time where before, a spouse, you would have to count their income where, you know, if the home was not in the name of both names. And so there were, and that created problems where it was not intended. So this would be a similar change.
I think it works. Look at it.
Okay. Any? Moving, moving right along and I'm sure you all know this, but the emotions that was shared regarding the parking ride, you know, those parents were very emotional. And when you think about yourself, something involving your children will make you madder than a hornet. And so we can understand where they are coming from. And I just hope that we convey to them tonight, Mary and I and two or three of them, that it is a top priority for this board to address, try to address that situation out there. And that's all I have. Nothing else? We adjourned.